A few seconds to try and get most of the attendees to a voted status. All right, I'm gonna give twenty seconds more. It looks like we've got nineteen of thirty participants have voted. All right, last call. I'll give you a couple more seconds, then I'm gonna end this poll. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and share the results so everyone can see. It looks like a majority of you were made aware of the meeting because of the town meeting notice. And I guess that was probably the virtual one as opposed to going to the town hall proper. But again, thank you for answering. It's good to know kind of how we were able to reach you guys about this meeting. All right. So before I turn the meeting over to Don Leifert, I would like to say a few words to anyone who is accessing this public informational meeting by landline or cellphone. Later on, there will be an opportunity for the public to ask questions or voice concerns. When that time comes, you can press star nine to indicate that you wish to speak. For those connected via the Zoom application, you can use the raise your hand feature at the bottom middle of your screen to indicate that you wish to speak. I will repeat these instructions when relevant later in the meeting, but we want you to know that there is a way for you to participate tonight. That said, we ask that all attendees hold their questions until the Q and A that will take place after the formal presentation is complete. If you are on a computer and would like to type your questions ahead of time using Zoom's Q and A feature, which is also located at the bottom middle of your screen, please provide your name alongside your question. Note, we will not respond to your questions until the formal Q and A at the end of the presentation. So with all that in mind, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to project manager Don Leifert.
Thank you, Hans. As Hans noted, this project is to talk about the Route 108 Maple Ave Amesbury Road intersection. We're gonna be looking at a few alternatives. This project was added into the state highway tenure plan in two thousand seventeen. As a result of it being added into the two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-six tenure plan, we started design efforts, collecting survey data, and looking at a few real broad alternatives. We took those alternatives to a town officials' meeting in September, on September fourth, two thousand eighteen. We discussed those alternatives and got some input as to what we should proceed with. The alternatives we're talking about here tonight are a result of that meeting. We gained lots of good information from that meeting and welcome comments and discussion tonight to help us moving forward. Ultimately, the department will look to the town officials to indicate if there is an alternative that they can support. And this will have to be tonight, but that's what we'll need eventually to move forward. Tonight's presentation is posted on our website. If anyone wants to view it after tonight. And if anybody couldn't attend and you want to let them know about it, they can also see the presentation. My contact information is also at the end of this presentation and on the website. So if anybody has any questions, wants to call me or send me an email, certainly welcome to do that. With that, I'll turn it back to Hans.
Thank you, Don. One thing, it occurs to me, I forgot to mention, this meeting is being recorded tonight by Diane in your guys' town hall. I guess I don't actually know where she is, but she's recording the meeting and will be posting it on your YouTube channel at a later date. So you can also refer people to that video once it's posted if they weren't able to make it tonight. So moving forward from that, before I invite project engineer Dan Primo to speak, I want to run another quick poll about concerns you might have with the existing intersection, if any at all. Like the last one, I'm gonna give you a minute or so to answer the poll before moving forward. So you should see it on screen now. And you are able to select multiple answers for this one. So if you have, you know, a variety of concerns regarding the intersection, go ahead and select all that apply. All right, I'm gonna give it ten more seconds and then I'll share the results. All right, I'm gonna close it down. Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone, for, you know, pulling in on that one. It looks like the largest concern is safety. So too many crashes or close calls surrounding the intersection, followed closely by vehicle speed. And then, yeah, you can see everything else up on, up on screen there. So now we kind of know town consensus. So thank you again for that. I'm now gonna turn the meeting over to project engineer Dan Primo, who will present the alternatives.
Thank you, Hans. Good evening, everyone. As project manager Don Leifert indicated, we've got some history of we had gained some input at the last meeting that we, that we came to the town with. And so now we're here to talk about primarily about the two design alternatives that we've, that we've developed, concept plans for, a four-way stop alternative and a roundabout alternative. And again, those are, some of you have already seen them. They're posted on the website. We tried to post the information, the information ahead of time to help people in advance of the meeting and give some folks some opportunity to think about things they wanted to ask or, or talk about this evening. So moving along, the existing conditions is, this is just a bunch of numbers here. The traffic volume is, what we've got here is the average annual or the annual average daily traffic. So there's forty, on Route 108, there's forty-four hundred and thirty vehicles a day. That was in, that's in two thousand twenty-two numbers. So a little bit more existing now, but we collected some numbers for the, what would be the opening year of construction if we, if this project moves forward. So in two thousand twenty-two, we're looking at forty-four hundred and thirty vehicles on Route 108. Interestingly, Amesbury Road is very close. Amesbury Road has thirty-eight hundred and ten vehicles per day and followed by Maple eleven hundred and twenty vehicles per day. And as far as, as the predominant traffic flow, in looking at the AM and PM peak traffic numbers, in the morning, the peak hour numbers are, there is predominantly southbound, so southbound on Route 108 and also southbound on Amesbury Road heading towards Massachusetts. And in the evening, it's the opposite. It's everybody's headed northbound. And again, interestingly enough, the traffic splits on Amesbury Road and Route 108 are very, the numbers are very similar. So there's a lot of traffic on Route 108 or on Amesbury Road that comes in to this, to this intersection, which is a cause for all of the concern, you know, and the safety issues that we're, that we're talking about here. Posted speed is thirty miles an hour on Route 108, thirty-five miles an hour on Amesbury Road, and thirty on Maple. The lane widths are eleven to twelve feet on Route 108, and shoulder widths vary zero to three feet. Right-of-way width is, the corridor is anywhere from fifty to sixty-six feet of right-of-way. Crash data is ten-year, the ten-year crash data from two thousand nine to two thousand eighteen shows us fifteen crashes during, during this period. Eight involved another motor vehicle and twelve out of those were non-injury crashes. And as, again, as we've heard and, and people can attest to, there's been, even though there's, you know, these are the documented crashes from the Department of Motor Vehicle Database, there reportedly is a lot of close calls and near misses at this intersection to do the geometry. And again, this is just the highlight of the existing conditions, Route 108 and the fact that Amesbury comes in with a stop sign and has virtually the same amount of traffic as Route 108. You've got a lot of cut-through traffic trying to get in and out of Amesbury Road. And then you also have some potential conflict points with, with the slip ramps coming in on, on three of the legs of this intersection. Just, just general design considerations. Safety is, is, is the first, the first criteria that we're trying to, trying to address safety. And we're trying to also promote efficient traffic flow and, and again, ties in with safety. But we're trying to keep, to keep traffic moving through this intersection. This intersection is somewhat challenging because of the, the Maple Street leg of it as well that comes in. And it's, 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 it's an odd geometry to deal with from a, from a traffic flow standpoint. And I'll get into the details of that a little bit later. The other piece is property impacts. We always try to minimize property impacts or balance impacts. Again, in light of the first two criteria up, up on the slide here, we're trying to be sensitive and minimize property impacts. And also, the environmental aspects are always something that, that we were aware of and trying to either minimize or avoid if possible. We're gonna talk a lot more in detail about those and our environmental person will also be talking about status and some more environmental issues. But this project, for the most part, has, has, you know, we have concerns with historic aspects, wetlands, potential stream crossing issues. If we, if we end up, and I'll talk about that, we end up dealing with, with the stream, the culvert crossing Amesbury Road, threatened species, and then water quality is also something that we need to consider. And, and again, we're gonna get into these details. So the four-way stop alternative, again, it's, it's, you're gonna end up with stop signs on, on every approach. Removing the slip ramps, this reduces the, it provides a more controlled environment and ultimately should be a safer, a safer condition. Everybody comes to a, to a complete stop and, and has to go from there. This is kind of, there's also utilities, there's also utilities that are in the intersection, the utility poles, aerial utilities that will be addressed as part of the, part of the reconfiguration of the intersection. And this is kind of getting ahead of ourselves, but it was a good place for me to put a cost in. The preliminary construction cost for a four-way stop alternative is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm gonna, so, so here is this, here is the four-way intersection layout. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna break away from the PowerPoint in, in one minute to go into the details. I want to focus more, I want to zoom in and focus more. So I'm gonna break into a PDF, which is one of the, which are the PDFs that are posted on the website. Again, those are posted on the website for, for, for people to see. But, but before I do that, I want to talk about just the slide here is the roundabout alternative. And it'd be, it would be a single-lane roundabout. And again, would move traffic safely and efficiently through, through the intersection. And that, that would allow free, free traffic flow. Utility poles are still an issue. The, the roundabout cost is a little bit more at one point one million, largely due to the, the elements of a roundabout being, there, there's a lot more curbing and, and concrete involved with that layout. So I'm gonna go ahead and break out to the, to the, to the PDFs at this point. All right, so this is the plan, this is the plan that was, that's posted on the website. And there's a lot, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom in here, but before I do that, I wanted to orient everyone. This is Route 108 again, coming up through. And then north is in this direction, so down, down is Amesbury Road into Massachusetts. We also have a legend up here that, that, you know, if you want to take a look at this closer after the meeting, again, it's posted on the website. But the legend indicates, I'm gonna go over all the colors on the plan. It indicates all the colors on the plan. And this plan actually has what we call profile views, which would be a cut, a vertical cut down the center of the road. If you were looking at the side view of the road, the elevation of, of, of the roadway. So I'm not gonna talk too much about those. Those would be, the only thing I will say is, is we're matching the existing vertical geometry very closely. So I will talk a little bit about them, but again, there's really nothing earth-shattering that I need to zoom in on. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus on the plan layout here. So here, so here we are. Again, south is going down the page, is, is going to Massachusetts. This is, to the left is going towards Newton, to the right is Maple Ave going towards Southampton. And the existing roadway is in gray here, so you see pieces of existing roadway. It's hard to see under the intersection because our proposed information is on top. The red is the buildings in the area. The, the blue hatching is delineated wetlands. The blue are, is, is the stream that I alluded to earlier. The dashed blue line here is the, the existing right-of-way. These brown lines are the property, property lines, and we've got property owners' names here as well. And for the proposed condition, what we're looking at is the yellow is the proposed pavement and travelway, and then the proposed shoulders are in brown. And you can see, you know, they're, they're a little bit harder to see, but they're, because they're narrow, but these are the four-foot shoulders. And we have driveway matches up here are in orange. And let's see, what else can I say? So, yeah, so that will orient us. So as far as the proposed work, again, what we tried to do is, in order to, to, to fit this intersection, as, 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 as you folks realize, Amesbury Road slopes down at about four percent. It goes downhill towards, towards the low point down, down on Amesbury here. So we had to position the layout of the road to, to, to be relatively flat. So again, it matches the existing geometry fairly well up here. We're, we're in the two percent range. Again, very similar to what's existing today, and then it drops off on Amesbury Road, on the Amesbury Road leg, very similar to what you see out there today. From a, from a, from a typical standpoint, we were showing, we're gonna have eleven-foot lanes and five, five-foot shoulders out here. And then we're gonna have a curved roadway through, through the intersection itself. That's more to, to formalize the intersection proper. And also, one of the things we're gonna talk about is, I alluded to it earlier, is water quality. So we have to, part of our permit process, we need to, this is in what's called an MS four community. And there's gonna be a slide about that a little later, but essentially, we need to treat as much pavement as we can for the, within the proposed project area that we have. So the curbing allows us to do that. The curbing helps also with that. And we're gonna have drainage that, that associated with the curbing that will bring water to, for both of these, for both, and this, this discussion applies to both this, this alternative and the roundabout alternative. They're, they're both essentially the same in, in the fact that our drainage is gonna come down to this quadrant in here. And really, this is the, the best location to do our water treatment. There is some area without getting into the, the wetlands, and it's, it's the lower section of the road. We can get, we can get a good portion of our drainage to treat the water in this, in this location here. So you can see the label here, water quality treatment area. So that's what that's all about. So beyond, beyond the curbing, you're gonna have just a grass panel and slope matches out here from a, and another thing that I didn't mention color-wise on here is there's, there's some brown to reddish-brown hatching in both quadrants here. And this is to address truck traffic. So this intersection is, is, is designed to accommodate tractor-trailers for these three legs of the intersection. And so that's why with the tractor-trailer traffic, we have what's called these, these raised, raised aprons. So what you're talking about is similar to the roundabout, to the middle of the roundabout, which I'm gonna get to in a bit. This would be like a three-inch lip. You'd have curbing with a three-inch lip and a concrete apron here so that trucks, so cars would travel on the yellow portion. But then, once you had big trucks coming through, they need the, the extra width. And again, this is gonna be curved and, and, and a controlled intersection. So we have to provide so that the trucks can, can make the turn. So that's what these, these extra little hatching areas are. So as far as the expense of the work, because there's already a lot of existing pavement and this intersection is fairly big already, we're able to fit this relatively cleanly in this intersection, keeping the project footprint pretty minimal. We're talking about two hundred feet of work probably on each leg, more or less. And on Route 108 to the north, we, we're, we're showing some yellow up here near the Pond Street intersection, and that's mostly just pavement match work. By the time we, we get there, again, it's just, it's just the, the match, the pavement. There's really not much going on there. We're matching pretty well. We've got driveway matches shown in, as I mentioned, in, in orange here that are, that are pretty minimal. The green, I guess I never did talk about this light green. The light green here is actually the proposed slope work. So that shows the extent of our work. So the extents of the grading. So beyond the roadway itself, this is the grade, the, the panel I was talking about, and, and grade into the existing slopes and lawns and, and, and topography that's out there. So again, it's pretty minimal, pretty minimal impacts. There is impacts to, there is right-of-way impacts to all four properties on each quadrant of, of the, the intersection. So again, so relative to the northwest quadrant here, there's, there's a little bit, we talked about the right-of-ways, the blue line here. So any, any green showing beyond the right-of-way is a little bit of an impact. So there's a little bit of a grading impact on this property. So we'll, we'll, this would, would be a, a, either a temporary or a permanent slope easement that we would be, that we would need to, to, to look to. This quadrant on the northeast quadrant of, of, of the intersection, again, matches pretty well. There is gonna be a little bit of slope work again to match the existing, the existing topography on the property here. Moving down to the lower side of the intersection, going on Amesbury Road, the, the limit of work is just beyond Gould Hill Road. And again, in, by the time you get to the Gould Hill Road intersection, we're only talking about pavement match. The roadway, Amesbury Road, again, the slopes are pretty close to, to what's there today. You're gonna have a little bit of a change coming down here to keep a consistent grade. And then, again, by the time you get to Gould Hill, we're only talking about pavement match work down in this area. One of the things that I alluded to earlier was a stream, stream crossing. So there's a culvert here on Amesbury Road, and we're still, we're gonna, we're still, we're still evaluating the need to replace this culvert. Maintenance people, we've reached out to our maintenance people, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna see if, if we feel that this, this, this structure is in need of, of replacement. And we're gonna address that. And again, that would, would bring us into dealing with stream crossing rules from, from an, from, from a department, from a DES, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services standpoint. So, but we're not sure yet. Again, we, we need to verify the, the need. And if, if we really need to replace the culvert. If not, if, if, if it's, if it's deemed adequate, then we're, we're not gonna go there. So impacts, again, the green here for the, for the southwest quadrant. We've got, again, is just slope work beyond the right-of-way line. Again, the right-of-way line is the blue line. So we've got a little bit of slope work out here. Again, this would be a slope easement. Out, out in here, you're gonna see that we also have some wetland impacts in here. So, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna be dealing with wetlands. So, because this, this hatching area, as you recall, is a wetland. So we've got a little bit of wetland impacts there. And then on the southeast quadrant, again, slope, slope work impacts associated with the roadway and then the, the water quality treatment area. And by water quality, what I'm talking about is, is a treatment swale. So it's just gonna be a swale, a linear swale alongside of the roadway. I think, I think that's about. And again, so for this work, we're talking about, our preliminary estimate is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So now I'm gonna switch over to the roundabout alternative. And again, very similar, you know, the plan orientation is the same, the colorization is, is, is the same. Impact-wise, we're, 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 we're very, very similar. So for the roundabout design here, again, the hatching, the hatch color is a raised apron, similar to a raised concrete apron with curbing, similar to what we talked about on the previous plan. So roundabouts, I'm sure most of you have driven through roundabouts, and you'll see the raised apron, and that's what this, this, this hatching is. We also have a little bit of that similar raised apron on the outside to accommodate trucks that would be going down Amesbury Road as well. So similar to the other, to the other layout, we, we positioned this to minimize impacts and, and try to match the existing grades as best we can. This one has a little bit more, I mean, very similar, but again, a little bit more, a little bit more grading difference along Amesbury Road, again, because the roundabout takes up a little bit more room in the center. So, but the, the approach goes a little bit further, but relatively speaking, you're only talking about another foot perhaps, a vertical difference maybe, and the extents of the project that are virtually identical on Amesbury Road. What makes this different from a, so the same applies as far as the, 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 the treatment for curbing out here, you know, this, these roundabouts are gonna be curved on the outside, and we're capturing water like I talked about before, and we're gonna have a water quality treatment area in the same quadrant. And then the roundabout has the added feature of the splitter islands. So what you'll see on every approach is a raised concrete island with curbing again, what's called the splitter island, so that traffic coming into the roundabouts is, are directed around, circulate, to circulate around the roundabout. So that, that, the splitter islands in themselves create a little bit wider footprint coming into the roundabout itself. So there's, there's a slight difference in impacts, you know, in a throat areas up here where the splitter islands are. But for the most part, we're, 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 we're talking about virtually the same impact. So this roundabout is a, it's a hundred and twenty-foot diameter from, from, from out to out. And basically, we tried to get the smallest roundabout that we could, again, to fit, to fit into the site and, and try not to get anything and probably fit into, you know, the nature, the setting as well, you know, not, not, you know, minimize impacts so that the, the Newton Rose corner setting. So this is the, pretty much the smallest roundabout that we can fit in here and still accommodate truck traffic. So trucks can make it, you know, as we design roundabouts, we, you know, the trucks will use the apron to negotiate around, around the turns, and, and the cars will, can negotiate around the yellow portion without, without infringing onto the apron. And then the center is, is, is just a regular landscape center. And I do have, I do have a, a section, a typical section coming up in the slideshow that kind of shows it to you in, in, inside view in, in a, in a section format. So to step, step through the impacts, again, very similar, the extents of the work, again, not much different as far as on Route 108 and on Amesbury, same locations. And impacts, again, almost mirroring, like I said, a little bit more perhaps. So if you look at the northwest quadrant here, you, you have your little orange drive match here, which is fine. And then beyond the right-of-way, you have a little bit of grading along, along the quadrant here. Again, this is just to match in the, the slope work. So that'll be an easement, again, a slope easement. And on the northeast side, in similar fashion, we've got your driveway matches. We, we can match into the existing driveways. We, we can match into the existing driveways. This is the orange again. And then the slope match is, is, is the green. And again, the slope match here looks like it's a, you know, again, it's, it's similar to the other option, you know, it might have a little bit more grading associated on this side with this option, whereas the other option might have had a little bit on this corner. So all in all, it's, 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 it's similar. And then on the lower quadrants, same thing, not much more to talk about. The same, same type of impacts, we're gonna have slope easements, temporary and slow, permanent slope easements. One thing is the water quality, this area will be a drainage, a permanent drainage easement from this property on the, on the south, southeast quadrant. Construction cost for this one, again, was a little bit more, it was, we're looking at something in the order of 1.1 million dollars. I think I've covered, I've covered everything I want to cover here. I will switch back to the, to the PowerPoint presentation. And so this is what we've been talking about. This is the roundabout typical. So again, it's just a section view as you're, as if you were approaching, you know, you were approaching the intersection. And what you would see is, you would, you would see in the intersection, you would see that, that, like we were looking at in, in the plan view, you can see where you're, you, an 18 foot wide travel width, which is on the outside of the roundabout, and then the truck apron that we were looking at that goes around the inside is a 16 foot wide. Before, I referred to it as, as a raised, as a raised apron. There are, most of the time, they're referred to as truck aprons when you're talking about roundabouts. And again, this is a three inch lip. So it would be curved, it would be curbing with a, with a, with either a rounding or a bevel on the edge. So it's not a sharp edge. And again, it's a three inch lip, whereas the curbing on the outside is straight, is a straight vertical curbing with a seven inch reveal. And then the center island is 52 feet in this case. And that would be grass, landscaped with grass. Again, out, out to out, we're looking at about 120 feet. One of the, the, the things that, when we're talking about roundabouts, a, a point of interest is always, or, or even from the very beginning, we've been talking about safety, trying to improve safety of this intersection. And, and just by, just by controlling the intersection and, and, and formalizing it to a four-way stop intersection should be an improvement from, from, again, controlling traffic and, and everybody should be stopping. And but that said, a, a four-way intersection has, this is something that we always, when we talk about roundabouts, the slide always comes up to, to promote the safety of roundabouts. So you have the comparison here. So that being said, the four-way intersection here, there are 32 vehicle-to-vehicle conflict points. So which essentially means that every approach to the intersection, when you're approaching from, from either direction, and for every movement, whether it's a right turn, straight through the intersection, or a left, there's, there's a conflict point associated with that. So for every approach, you end up with eight, eight potential conflict points. So for a total of 32 vehicle-to-vehicle potential conflict points. So the beauty of a roundabout is you're down to eight vehicle-to-vehicle conflict points. You have very few conflict points that you're dealing with, with a, with a roundabout layout. The other thing about a roundabout that's not really in the slides here, but regarding safety, the roundabouts are inherently safer due to the fact that if you do have vehicle-to-vehicle crashes or incidents, they tend to be lower speed and angular, angular collisions, which, which are not as severe. So they tended to be more minor incidents for those two reasons, because of the angle and, and, and the speeds through, through the roundabout, which theoretically, you know, you have, you know, with a four-way stop, you always have, you know, potential for people running stop signs or, or other issues with that as well. So anyways, that's the purpose of the slide is to kind of talk about, you know, really roundabout safety in itself. So, and so that's, yep, so that's pretty much, that's pretty much all I had. And I'm gonna turn it over to, to Hans at this point.
Alrighty, thank you, Dan. So before I invite environmental coordinator Rebecca Martin to speak, I just wanna run another quick poll, this one regarding roundabouts. So I'm gonna go ahead and pop that up on the screen, similar to all the previous times, just give a response as you're able. We'll run it for about 60 seconds, and then we'll, we'll talk about the results. And I apologize, something I, I'm realizing I forgot to do on the previous polls is, is state the question aloud. For those who are dialing in, you might not be able to participate and vote, but you should at least be aware of what we're discussing. So this roundabout, sorry, this poll is with one being no experience and five being very experienced. How experienced are you at driving a roundabout? So I'm gonna allow a few more seconds here to collect a couple more responses, and then we'll, we'll take a peek at the final results. Awesome, pretty high participation for this poll, thank you. So I just shared the results to everyone's screen. It looks like a majority of you, 70%, are very experienced at driving roundabouts. They aren't as uncommon as they used to be, so I suppose I'm not too surprised. But it is always good to know that people are, have some amount of comfort when, when approaching a roundabout. So with that in mind, I'm now gonna turn the meeting over to Rebecca Martin. So there she is.
Thank you, Hans. And thanks, everybody, for your participation tonight. As part of the National Environmental Policy Act, projects that have a federal nexus, so either a federal funding source or a federal permitting, they have to be investigated for potential impacts that they might have on any natural, cultural, or social environment surrounding them. It's really important for us to know what those resources are as early in our planning as we can, so that we can appropriately try to avoid or minimize those impacts to the best of our, to the best that we can with the project design. Part of our review includes historic resources, and you might have heard of the Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. And part of that is that the department is reviewing the project area to determine if there are historic resources within the area that would be impacted by either of these alternatives that were proposed and shown to you tonight. Historic properties can be buildings or structures that are more than 50 years old, and it can also include archaeological sites. In addition to the age of any of the buildings or structures, we also need to look at whether they're potentially eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. As part of this review, we're asking that if you have any concerns about historic resources in the area or archaeological resources in the area, please bring them to our attention, and either at the end, during the question and answer period, or in the chat pod. We very much appreciate that. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act also allows people who have a direct interest in historical resources to become more involved, and that's in a consulting party status. And that could be town officials, historical societies, and those sorts of folks. And anybody that would be interested in doing that would contact the Federal Highway Administration. At the end of this presentation, there's going to be a brochure that includes, that you can, a link to a brochure that includes contact information. It's called the Section 106 Consulting Party Process in New Hampshire. It's also available on the Bureau of Environment website, on the DOT website. As far as natural resources goes, we've completed a field review of the project area. And as the project design moves forward, we're going to continue to deter, to determine if any permits are going to be needed for the project. As Dan mentioned earlier, it seems like there are likely to be wetland impacts. And so we anticipate that a standard dredge and fill wetland permit will be needed. If there end up being impacts to the culvert on Amesbury Road, as Dan mentioned, we'd also need to be in compliance with the stream crossing rules. And so that would just be another aspect of our wetland permitting that we would need for the project. We're also looking at federal and state listed threatened and endangered plant and animal species. So far, the only threatened species that we've come up with in the area is the northern long-eared that. You might be aware of the northern long-eared that. It's listed as a potential species in almost all of New Hampshire, except for highly urbanized areas. So that shows up on most of our projects, and we're pretty adept at consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for that one now. The project is within an urbanized area for the MS4 permit, as Dan mentioned. And so water quality is a concern for this project, and ensuring that there is adequate stormwater treatment included for the pavement in the area. And I'll turn it back to Hans, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Rebecca. So before we head out to our Q and A, I just wanna talk real quick about the project schedule. So of course, we're here tonight for the public informational meeting. Moving forward with our design, after we hear your feedback from tonight, we will eventually be looking to schedule a public hearing in the spring of 2021, no firm date set. And then after that, we will move forward with the final design of the project through the 2021 and 2022 years. Looking to advertise in the summer of 2022, and construction starting in the spring of 2023. These things aren't fixed, you know, they're already kind of general as I presented them. But that is a rough approximation of how the project may advance from this point. So I will acknowledge real quick, I see Andy has his hand raised. We're, we're right about it, the Q and A, so I'm gonna wait to address that hand raise until I've, I've just said a few points here. But I just want you to know, I'm looking, I see what you're doing. So we would like to now invite you to ask questions and to provide comment about the project and the alternatives that have been presented tonight. As a reminder, those that are dialing in via phone may press star nine to indicate that they wish to speak. We will let you know when your audio is connected and being broadcast to all. For those on the Zoom application, you can either use the raise your hand feature if you wish to speak, or you can type your questions using Zoom's Q and A feature. As a reminder, whether you are electing to speak or choosing to type your questions, please provide your name before asking your question. So yeah, I'm gonna start with Andy, who's got his hand raised, but then we do have some questions that came in throughout the presentation in the Q and A. So thank you guys for submitting those questions. But I'm gonna start off. Andy, you are now unmuted. Go ahead and ask your question.
Hi, so my comment was mostly in regards to the historical building aspect. Not, not that they're all registered, I think, but I don't know if there's any. So far, the roundabout plan doesn't necessarily have any impact to structures, because every building in that area is a historical building, as far as my knowledge goes. Everything's been built in the 1800s there. So I also, like I said, I don't believe either of the plants have any impact to structures. My issue with the water, waterlands impact would be the well water for 43 North Main Street is actually, the wellhead is over in the wetlands on the, I don't know the heading, but it would be on the Maple Ave to the Bear Hill Road, that back corner over there. So I didn't know if there was, how much of the investigation into the wetlands impact there is. Cause I know also the pond, right up the hill on 108 drains down through that whole wetlands area through the culverts and everything.
Yeah, no, great point, Andy. I'm gonna probably toss this one to Dan to, to answer, but I know it does deal a little bit with the environmental side, so there's a chance we might pull Rebecca Martin in.
Thank you.
So you're, you're saying that your, 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 your property well or the, the well for the property of 43 North Main is, is in that quadrant? That's, that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so the 43 North Main Street is on the, like, side of 108 in Maple Ave. Our well is actually across the street on Maple Ave in the Maple Ave Bear Hill Road, kind of that, that quarter.
So, so you're talking about, I don't, can, can you see the screen? You're talking about it down here somewhere?
Yes, so where, yeah, so I don't know what direction is exactly correct here. Yeah, so we're on the bottom left of the photo, right? So the bottom right where that, that whole blue area is, the well's on that side, but the house is that little Tetris shaped piece there, right above it.
Yeah, here.
Yep.
Yeah, well, we need to map that. We'll, I don't, I'm not sure that that shows up on our mapping, so we'll, we'll, we'll we need to map that and follow up and, and, and be sure that we that we address it.
Okay, I just, and, and the only thing is, is I know, so, I mean, obviously, so I'm associated with 43 Main, so that's where my biggest concern is. But I know everybody in that area draws from that same aqua, like from that same area. So it'll be a huge impact to everybody's water in that area, I imagine.
So, so are you saying it's a public well, or is it?
No, no, I just, I know everybody in town has well water, so there's no public water. So everybody's has, are, you know, either drilled wells or whatever in that whole area. And that's the lowest spot in, you know, in, you know, that's a, everybody kind of draws from that source. Cause there's a, a couple of little ponds that dump down into that area and kind of stream through there. So everybody in the area, when that, I imagine there's got to be a lot of fill and dredge, you know, or like blasting, whatever, to make sure it's a, especially if the round, the roundabout goes in. So well, I imagine all the wells in that area will be affected, which, affected, which has happened to many of towns with all kinds of public projects in the area. So one of my biggest concerns with it.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely have to, to, to take a look at that and, and try to get all of that information and mapping. So we're, so we're, so, so we can address, 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 address that aspect accordingly.
Much appreciated.
All right, and I don't know if it's necessary, but Rebecca, if you're on the line, if, do you have anything you'd wanna add to that, answering that question? Or do you feel Dan summed it up well?
No, I thought Dan provided a nice summary, and also the wetland impacts here that I think the design team's doing a really great job trying to confine them as much as possible.
Great, all right. Well, Andy, I'm gonna go ahead and mute you, but of course, if you have a question later on in the meeting, just raise your hand again, and we'll get to you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Tricia, I see you have your hand raised, but I'm gonna bounce over to our Q and A for a question or two, and then I'll get to you. So relatively early on in the meeting, an anonymous attendee asked, you mentioned the, the posted speed for each of the roadways, but what is the actual speed that people are driving during the study period? So Dan, I think you're most familiar with the traffic data through the area, and so I'm gonna bounce this question towards you.
So I don't have, I don't have any information on the actual speed. We would have to do a speed study to, to get that information. Typically speaking, the posted speeds are, are based on the 85th percentile traveling speed. But again, we did not specifically do a, a speed study for this, for this intercept, for this area.
All right, we had another question roll in a little later on in the meeting, asking, curious, how old is the culvert? And what material is it made of? And I, I think that's referencing the culvert crossing under Amesbury Road that is under consideration for replacement.
So we're, we're, we're not sure. One of the things, one of the problems with that culvert is it's been extended at least once. And so that's part of the problem that we have. We, we have to get some, some, we have to do some more work to get to, and, and that, and a more complete culvert assessment. So we need to get some equipment out there and, and take a look at that closer. Cause again, the way it sits now, it's, it's, it's kind of underneath the head walls and, and the roadways actually appears to be, you know, bridged over some of the culvert. So that's part of the investigation that we're doing to try to figure out what the, what condition. So that's part of the investigation that we're doing to try to figure out what the, what condition it's in and if it's, it's something that we need to take care of.
All right. I'm going to do one more question from the Q and A, and then we'll get to you, Tricia. So Dennis Moran asked, was the small island proposed on the four-way stop raised or painted? Dan, you have the plan up on screen. I'm inclined to say, well, I guess I'm not sure that there is painted or raised island, but I wanted you to confirm that.
Well, these, if we're referring to these aprons, these again are going to be raised with a, with a, with a curb. Just like I explained for the roundabout, it's going to be a, a three-inch reveal curb with a, with a rounding or bevel on it. And then this area would be concrete. So the same, the same thing that you would have for the truck apron around the roundabout, the same detailing. Unless it's a different question, I don't know. You want to pop back and is that the question?
Yeah, if, if, if we, if that didn't address your question, Dennis, you can just phrase it again further down in the Q and A. The only other thought that came to mind is that existing detail shows up pretty prominently. There's one curved island that's a bit more obvious. So just to be clear, that one on the bottom left of the intersection is, is the previous existing condition. So.
Correct, correct. And these are all going away. There's, there's existing island, there's one here, there's one here, and there's one in here. And again, those are all going away.
Awesome. All right. So going over to our people that are calling in with their hand raised, Tricia, I'm going to allow you to speak, so go ahead and ask your question. It looks like you might be muted right now, though.
Okay, I think I did it.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. So this is Tricia. I'm on the Conservation Commission. And so our major concerns, obviously, are the wetlands. That lower quadrant that Andy was talking about earlier is now owned by the Conservation Commission. I noticed on your map, you says it's owned, it's owned by Jane Sheeran Trust. Conservation acquired that in December in order to protect those wetlands. We're a little concerned that on either plan, the impervious surfaces that, you know, or increased impervious surfaces are going to cause increased pollutants in our wetlands. You know, we all know, studies have shown that within 100 feet of wetlands, it's going to result in an adverse effect, and we've got habitat that we also were trying to protect. So I don't want to, you know, pop anyone's balloon here, but we do have concerns on that. The other thing Conservation has talked about is the aprons for both Maple and Gould Hill are both scenic roads, and that stream crossing is actually finally working the way it should. We had some issues with that. I don't know how many, I want to say five or six years ago. And that seems to have been corrected, and my gears might be off. I might be a little bit off. That's from the conservation standpoint. The other thing is, you know, I don't know on either design, I guess I'm going to talk about the roundabout, and our road agent probably would have a more intelligent conversation than I would. But I can't imagine, even though you say tractor-trailer trucks can do this, and I, I've also driven a plow truck. I, I think it's going to be a nightmare. But again, you've got the design. I guess I'm going to defer to my road agent and talk to him on the side to see what he feels about it. Because I think it's going to be a disaster, but that's just my opinion. Conservation, that's not Conservation's opinion. So again, we own that quad, quadrant. Obviously, stormwater management, we'd like to see that. The, the fact that there's going to be water treatment area right in our area is somewhat of a concern. We'd need to see more plans. And I guess that's what we have to do at your next hearing.
All right. Thank you, Tricia. And I guess just to be clear, you weren't looking for a particular answer to a question right now? You mostly just wanted to raise those concerns?
Absolutely. I just, you needed to know what, how Conservation feels.
Definitely. No, thank you very much for weighing in.
Sure.
All right. I could be getting the name wrong, but Steve Sarachi. I know you had a couple of questions in the Q and A, but you also have your hand raised, so I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk, and you can kind of just cover everything that you were hoping to cover. So at your leisure, it looks like you are muted, but once you unmute yourself, you're good to go.
All right. Can you hear me?
We can.
And my partner in crime, sorry about that. I am the property owner, the 22 Gould Hill Road property owner. I can tell you a couple of things. I can tell you that that existing culvert is definitely going to cause you a problem. There's be, just in the portion between the cement barrier and the, the roadway, the culvert is already collapsing. There's several holes in it that the town keeps just covering over with dirt or the state keeps covering over with dirt. And it's about a foot down, and it just keeps falling into the hole. It creates a safety hazard currently for, for, for me walking by there or anybody that might be walking by there that would walk across that area, because eventually someone's just going to fall into the culvert. So you, I'm, I'm assuming you're probably going to have some sort of an issue there. My, my concern is that my well sits right there in that corner of my property. And obviously, my, a good portion of my water source comes from the wetlands that are across the other side of the, of the Hume Brook there. And as a result, obviously, we're impacting those. And whether the, the water quality treatment area on the other side of the road obviously is in a, in an area that would also impact my well. So obviously, I have the same concerns that, that everybody else does, which was the MTBE assessments being done. I don't know when the state did the, the 108 assessments several years ago, if this property was one of the ones that was included. I know at the time, I lived on 108 across from the library, and, and we were actually part of what was assessed. But I don't know if, if this property had been assessed at that point in time, if there was well samples taken or not, but I'd be interested in seeing that. And then I guess my, my biggest question is, what is the source of the funding for this project? Obviously, at this point, we've talked about some, some estimates which seem awfully low for, for a project this size. But, but even that being said, where is the funding source going to be coming from?
All right. Thank you, Steve. Dan, I, I think you're probably poised to answer all these, but I, I know Don could probably speak about the funding if, if you wanted to hit it from two sides.
Well, I, I just want to confirm from Steve where, where his, where his well is, is as well on the south side of the brook or on the north side of the brook?
My well is on the south side of the brook.
So it's on?
Right in the, correct. It's, it's about, if I were, my, my well is about 10, 10 or 15 feet from the brook on the south side, on the Gould Hill side.
So is it on your property? Is it within your property line, or is it?
Correct, correct.
So it must be right near, near the property line then? Yep.
Correct. It's tucked right into that corner.
Yep, okay. Regarding, regarding funding, I will, I will let Don speak to that.
Yes, so this project is federally funded, federal highway funds. I know somebody else asked, I think they're wondering if the funding will be available right now. You know, we're basing this project on projected federal funding. Who knows with this COVID-19, whether or not it's going to impact federal money as far as the gas tax. Or if things continue and we continue to get the federal money, and that's how this will be funded. There aren't any town funds required, at least not at this point. And it sounds like there aren't any water lines here. It's all private wells. And I don't believe there's any town sewer line here either. So and if there's no water, town water, then there's no hydrant. So there should not be any town funds required at this point.
All right. I know Steve also mentioned the MTBE assessment of the corridor 108. I am not sure who's best to answer this one, but was it through this section of 108 as well? Are we aware of that?
I don't know if Rebecca would know that at all. It was probably DES that did it, not us.
Sorry, Don, I was unmute. This is Rebecca Martin. I will check in with the contamination program and see if, if they're aware. I'm not familiar with the MBTE testing in 108.
Okay. So Steve, I mean, I'm trying to think. So funding, well location, MBTE for the area. Did we answer the concerns you've raised?
I guess my final one would just be in regards to the, the, the current buffer between the, in these areas. I mean, what are we going to do to maintain that buffer or to increase that buffer?
So, Dan, if you want to speak on this, you can. I guess one thing I want to talk about is for stormwater treatment, capture and treatment, the current condition without curbing out there today is that water spills off the pavement to either side of the road and ultimately saturates the soil or ends up deposited in those wetland areas. So one of the benefits of including a stormwater quality treatment area is that we're actually capturing water from those impervious areas along the curb and through some closed drainage system we'll install in order to direct it to our grass treatment swale so that it goes through some amount of treatment before it ultimately reaches that wetland area that I think it would be part of the same ground table at that rate. So I think there's an argument to be made that it's going to be improving the existing condition for treatment of stormwater in the area.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm speaking more, less in regards to the, the water treatment that we already discussed, but more in regards to the buffer. There, there's a significant amount of tree cover between my property, between the Hume Brook and the intersection. There's currently a significant amount of tree buffer between me and there, but most of that resides right at the street because of the wetlands. And obviously, that's where we're talking about impacting the most here. So my concern is that I'm, what little buffer I do have on the other side of the, of the wetlands is now going to be removed as part of the construction process and, and what is in the plan for replacing that if, if need be.
Gotcha. All right. I'm going to refer that one to Dan.
So you're, you're correct that the slope work on that quadrant is, is going to impact some, some of what we see as a tree line in this area. And, and along the buffer you're talking about, again, our, our, our work is going to extend to, to the limits of the wetlands. So typically speaking, I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be graded, it's going to be grassed over. And that's, that's what the proposal is at this point.
So we're not talking about replacing any of those trees in, in that area?
Correct. All right. Well, Steve, if nothing else comes to mind, I think we'll move on to the next question.
And so I just add that because of the MTBE question, we never really answered. If Steve wants to email me, I could forward that to Rebecca, and then we can, we can reply back to him through email.
Definitely. Good point, good point, Don. And we'll post it at the end of the presentation, but Don Leifer, the project manager, his contact information is on the project website, just for people's reference. All right. Well, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to the Q and A, we've got Annie Collier asking, if construction begins in spring of 2023, what is the projected completion date? What will be the impact to traffic during the construction period, and how will it be mitigated? I'm going to toss that one to Dan.
So we, well, so it depends when the actual advertising date is. But if construction starts in the spring, this should be a one-year, a one-year, one-season construction project. So we, we should be able to, you know, do that during, during that, that season. From a traffic control standpoint, you know, we, we would do, we would do alternating one-way traffic and, and, you know, using lane closures during off-peak traffic times. So, so that you went, you know, to mitigate or to minimize any traffic backups. But you, you will need some lane closures to, to do the work periodically.
All right. Another question from Annie Collier as well. Will the state or the town be responsible to landscape and maintain the roundabout island? And I think, I mean, Dan or Don, I, I would probably be able to answer that one.
So I could take that. If we do a roundabout, we would landscape the island, if that's what the town wanted inside the island. But we would want the town to maintain the landscaping after the project's done. And just a little bit on the vegetation, we'll take a look, you know, once we do these slopes. If there's areas we can, we can plant, they wouldn't be the same size trees, but we could plant them so vegetation would come back eventually.
All right. One more question from Annie before we move over to our next hand raised caller. What is the source of funding for the project? Is the availability of funding a consideration for the timeline? So I believe we've answered that one already. You know, a couple of questions ago, Don did talk about that federal funding. So I, I think we're good on that front. So I'm going to go over to C. Melvin, who's got their hand raised. You are now allowed to talk, and you are muted right now, but when you're ready, go ahead and ask your question.
What's the chances of doing underground power? Hello?
Yep, sorry. We hear you. Don, I'm going to speak on that one.
Yeah, I would say pretty slim. Unfortunately, the cost is pretty extensive. And when you have houses nearby, you know, you need to, if you put all the power poles underneath the ground, then you have to have transformers above the ground at those houses. So it becomes an issue to do that.
Do you have any kind of estimate?
I do not. I mean, a lot of the projects that cost million dollars to put things underground.
Okay, just thought I'd ask.
All right. Do you have any follow-up questions while we have you on the line?
No, I'm all set.
All righty. Thank you so much. All right. We're going to hear from Michael Deaso. You are now allowed to talk. So go ahead and ask your question at your leisure.
Trees or anything that needs, that's in the slope area, would that be covered or would the property owners be responsible for those?
Um, I don't know about others, but I had a little trouble right at the beginning of your question. Would you mind repeating it?
All right. Like any trees that would need to be removed in any of the slope areas? Is like, who's responsible to remove those trees?
All right, Dan, I think you can answer this one.
Yeah, that's, that'll be part of the construction contract. So the first thing that they're going to do is they're going to clear the trees and, and, and get rid of the, the topsoil, you know, before they do, you know, any of this work. And then they're going to regrade, they're going to regrade the area. And once they get all done, they will, they will reestablish the, the topsoil. And then what we call is turf establishment, so they'll, they'll, they'll reseed and, and ensure that, that the, the grass and, and ensure that there's, there's grass cover that grows before the completion of the contract.
All right. Thank you very much. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
All right. Moving back to our Q and A, we have something from Nick. Hi, this may have been stated already, but is there one proposal that is being favored over the other? So we'll start there, and then there's a bit more to the question. If you want to talk on that, Dan.
We're not, we're not suggesting one over the other. Again, we, we, we're, we're trying to be, to be accommodating. Again, we, we, we're, we're trying to be, to be accommodating to, you know, what people want, what the town, this is why we're here, is we're trying to get input and get a feel for what people want at this intersection. There was a need, you know, that was brought forth from the town to make improvements of this intersection. So as far as we're concerned, we will do, you know, either option is, is I think is either option I think is acceptable.
All right. So following up from that, Nick also asks, the speed limit on 108 is 30 miles per hour. Can consideration be made to lower the speed limit on Amesbury Road to 30 miles per hour? Or are the limits of both roads being adjusted after the project is complete? So that's, that's a bit more of a traffic question. I know, Dan, you spoke earlier about a speed study would need to be done on the corridor. But do you want to talk anymore about that response?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, I don't have a good, a good feel for that. I don't, I don't know again, if, if, if there was a problem. I know Amesbury is, I'm not sure whose jurisdiction it is. I believe it's state maintained. But I, I'm not sure, first of all, whose jurisdiction Amesbury is for, for the state roads. I think again, you know, we could, we could request a traffic study. I'm not sure what that process is. I don't know, Don. Do you have, do you have any more? Do you, can you offer any more to that?
Yeah. So usually our traffic bureau through Bill Lambert would initiate a traffic study. And he looks for info from the, from the town police and state police. As he does that study, it's not just a simple thing to say, okay, let's lower the speed. It becomes an enforcement thing. As Dan said, you know, it's usually based on the 85th percentile speed. So if we artificially make it 30 and there's more people going faster than that, then it's difficult for the police to, they can give people tickets, but it's difficult for that to be upheld in court afterwards. So, I mean, and the other thing you asked about, will it be looked at afterwards? We will likely look at it afterwards as well because this, both these options will change the, the travel through the area. So on the roundabout, we would, we would downpost coming into the roundabout just because of the configuration. Probably would downpost all the legs even for the four-way stop because of the configuration.
All right. Thank you, Don. I'm going to jump the queue real quick. Lisa Gonyar asks, can we see the other option on screen again? So Dan, would you mind switching over to the roundabout alternative just for a change of scenery? Awesome. Thank you. All right. So Christine Campbell asks, during construction, will the area still be passable or will traffic be detoured? So we touched on this a little bit already. The intent is for traffic to continue traveling through the area. There will be need for alternating one-way lane closures, but the intent is for those to be done during the off-peak hours. There was a roundabout recently constructed as part of the Newington Dover project where they were able to maintain traffic even during the construction of a roundabout through some kind of creative, single-lane detours for the traffic through one side or the other of the roundabout while they continued to shape the earth on the other side. So if you want to add to that at all, Dan, you're welcome to, but the short answer is yes, it will still be passable. And no, you will not be detoured around the intersection.
That's correct.
All right. We have a question from an anonymous attendee. Has there been any talk of doing a stoplight instead of a four-way stop? A light is much safer due to the amount of traffic. So Dan, I'm going to toss that one to you because I know you were talking with Jared Bedard about that earlier today.
So I'm, I'm going to start and then I'll probably turn it over to Don. But so we did, we did the, when we have an intersection project, we look at the traffic and we, one of the things we do, it's called a traffic single warrant analysis. And it's a series of, it's a series of, of components that are looked at and to see if, if there's enough traffic to warrant the placement of traffic signals. So in this case, the traffic signals are not met. So there's, there's not enough traffic to, to support traffic signals based on traffic. The, the other thing, you know, with, with traffic signals, it, you know, there's a, there's a cost, there's a maintenance cost associated with that too. And there's a lot more infrastructure involved. And there's also, you know, the construction costs of it. So there, there are several components there. So I don't know, Don, if you want to add anything else, but.
Oh, I mean, we, we obviously, if we went with the four-way stop, we could take a closer look at the possibility of putting signals in in the future. Maybe add some conduit at this time so they could be more easily added. But generally, it's, it's difficult to just throw up signals if they don't meet the warrants that Dan was talking about. Safety or accidents is one of the criteria for warrants, which may, you know, in the future, if we went with a four-way stop, maybe if there's a lot of crashes, maybe we would end up putting in signals to meet that warrant.
So one, one more thing I'd like to add is, you know, when we, when we get traffic information, and I alluded to that earlier in my very first slide about the, the traffic number projections that I was showing up. You know, when I was track, track, talking about the average daily traffic, the ADT here, I mentioned 2022, which is, you know, when the project would theoretically open, you know, at, you know, being built. But we also look at future years. So we look at a 20-year outlook when we get traffic numbers. So that said, you know, that puts us to 2042. So we use, we actually, when we look at traffic single warrants, we, we actually look, we actually look at those numbers as well. So even out to 2042, the traffic warrants that I, that I mentioned are not met, you know, with the traffic projections that are, that are anticipated here.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Glenn F. had a question also about traffic lights. I'm going to go ahead and dismiss that question, Glenn, because I think we just covered it, but feel free to ask it again if you're looking for more clarification. I'm going to do one more question from the Q and A before we hop back over to a couple of raised hands we have. So Rick Falkner says, the speed limit in this area is 30 miles per hour already. Why would this change since that is the speed limit in New Hampshire for a type of populated area? So if I'm understanding the question, that might have been in regards to someone else mentioning downposting through the area. So we've talked a little bit about that, how there would need to be a corridor speed study that determines the, the speed of travel is, is unsafe to the point where we'd want to post it at a slower speed. But I know that New Hampshire 108 being a state route through a relatively established corridor, 30 miles per hour is probably the lowest it would reasonably go outside of the downposting in advance of entering a roundabout. So that's, that's my first stab at it. But if you, if you have any other things to weigh in, Dan, I might invite you to do so.
No, I think again, we've, we've touched on this, you know, in several different ways. I mean, one thing to remember is, you know, right now, Route 108 is pretty, you know, people don't have to stop. So they come, you know, they, they come whipping around the corner there. They, you know, and there's some sight distance restrictions somewhat, you know, because of the trees on the inside corner. And then you've got people cutting over to Amesbury. So there's a lot of things happening and traffic again on 108 is moving at a pretty good clip. So with either one of these options, you know, traffic has, has to either stop, you know, when, when they get here or even to drive through a roundabout theoretically, you know, you're looking at, you know, 15 miles an hour. So, or, or something to that, to that extent. So, you know, traffic with any one of these, these options, you're not at the intersection proper. You're not going to have, you know, people are going to be, you know, slowing down to, to, you know, approaching the intersection to get through it. So again, I'm not sure, you know, if the concerns are more, you know, along the Route 108, like further from, from, from the intersection or down Amesbury. I mean, that's, that's another, that's a whole other, you know, that's a whole other, other element. It's not, you know, so much what we're talking about, you know, for the, for the intersection itself. That's all I wanted to say.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. We're going to toss back over speaking privileges to Steve Sorachi. So Steve, when you're ready, you are on the line.
All right. I came up with two other questions here, listening to the conversation. One is, I've heard now a couple of times that the, the impact of the construction will be minimized by doing off-hours construction. As in a butter, I need to understand what that means. Are we talking about, you know, not impacting the, the eight to nine o'clock in the morning and four to, you know, six o'clock in the, in the afternoon? Or are we talking about like night construction here?
All right. Good question, Steve. Dan, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, no, we're not necessarily talking about, and by, by, by off-peak, that's, that's exactly. And, and, and you may not even need off-peak here, you know. Again, these are not big, these, these are not big traffic numbers. So relatively speaking, so, you know, I anticipate that, you know, most, most of the work can be done, you know, throughout the course of the day. And by, you know, the peak, by off-peak, that's exactly what we mean is, you know, there's a peak hour that, that you have your maximum amount of traffic where you have, you know, 10% approximately of the entire day's worth of traffic happens in your, in your peak hour. So that's generally, you know, again, like, like you mentioned, seven or eight o'clock in the morning and then probably around five o'clock, four to five o'clock at night, you know, it's a little bit different. I, I do have that, that information. I just don't have it, you know, to share. So, but that is something that, that we're going to look at. And as we talk about construction and we put the, the, we talk about, when we put the contract package together to advertise for construction, one of the things that we do is we do, you know, put some, you know, we, we work with our construction folks as well, but we come up with, with, you know, what those restrictions are as far as construction timeframes. But generally speaking, again, you know, these are not high, high numbers that, that we're looking at here. So they could quite possibly even work all, all day long, you know, and just manage traffic. I mean, you know, our, our people are there and, 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 you know, the traffic gets managed. So even if you don't have, you know, restricted timeframes, if there's some kind of issue and you start having traffic backups, then we do, you know, we obviously, you know, take care of it. So, you know, we, we change, we change the patterns or timing. So, you know, we, we, we look at it in that light. So.
Okay. I, I also had a, I don't know if it's a question or a comment. You would tend, you had mentioned that you were moving the utilities. Currently, there's a utility pole in the middle of the Gould Hill Amesbury Road intersection, which means that Gould Hill being this nice little tidy scenic road now extends an opening that's over 100 feet wide at its, at its end off of Amesbury Road, which seems to encourage a large amount of traffic during that five o'clock in the afternoon rush hour to cut up Gould Hill Road over to 108. Is anything being done? It doesn't look like anything is being done to address that. But is at least the utility pole in question being moved? It's hard to tell from the images if that's one of the utility poles that's, that's being removed or not.
So we haven't, we haven't looked, so we haven't gotten to the point yet where we're looking at the relocation options. So once we start moving forward here with, with one of these options, then one of the things that we get started on is the, the utility verification and, and well, in court, utility relocation process. So we, then we have to start looking at, you know, we work with the utility companies and figure out, you know, we tell them, you know, you have to relocate. So we work with them. They come up with, with alternatives and we make sure that it meets our criteria, our utility accommodation, accommodation manual and such and, and, and other, some of our other guidance. So generally, that's, that's what gets the utility relocation process going and that that's how it works. So, and so right now, we, we really don't know to the, what extent we're going to relocate the, the utilities. But again, we're really not doing any work at all down here. I mean, this is just a pavement match work. So we're not changing, you know, you mentioned, you know, the openness. We're not changing any of the characteristics here with this project. So I, I, I am not sure at this point if anything would happen. You're referring to this pole that's in the middle here. So I am not sure what would happen to that pole, but if it does not need to be relocated as part of the relocations for the intersection proper, then it would not get changed. One of the things about aerial utility relocations is that a lot of times you can't just move one pole because they, they, you know, poles are in a, along certain lines. And then if you start moving them around, you might have to move, move an entire pole line or, or add some, some, some guy, what's called guy anchors, you know, those steel, those steel cables to, to brace the poles. And so they, you know, there may be some, some limitations with this pole already that, that, you know, that are, that are, I guess, further reaching than just moving that one pole. It may, you know, this, this may not seem like a big deal. But again, it may end up being a huge deal. And again, if it's not part, you know, ultimately, if it's not part of the relocations that need to happen, you know, for the intersection, then it would not get, it would not get addressed. Now, you're concerned during, if you're talking about, you know, perhaps additional traffic, you know, be, you know, using Gould Hill during, during construction, then, you know, perhaps we can put some, you know, we can look at that. And if it's, if it's a concern, then we could possibly put some, some fencing or some barrier, you know, if we think that's going to happen, you know, to, to protect the pole itself. I'm not sure if that answered your question, but it's pretty much all I can tell you at this point.
Yeah, no, I just, like I said, I just didn't know specifically. It's hard to tell from the images if that pole was, was, would, would be an added benefit for me being, being removed because obviously something that I'd like to see the town address, if it's not part of the state project, is the access to Gould Hill Road off of Amesbury Road because it is a source of, of concern. Like I said, for about an hour a day, I have cars that feel that they can go up Gould Hill Road at the same speed that they can travel down Amesbury Road. And a lot of times what happens is, is the traffic is backed up to the current stop sign and they're cutting into the other lane to cut off to, you know, to get up Gould Hill Road in the afternoon. And I see this routinely on a day-to-day basis, especially on Fridays during the summertime or Fridays during ski season when the traffic is even heavier in that five o'clock hour. So that's really my concern.
So now that I understand your question a little bit better, I can tell you that with these proposed improvements, the situ, that situation would get better because you, you will have less, less queue traffic on Amesbury, on the Amesbury Road leg. Especially with, with a roundabout, you know, traffic will move through fairly smoothly. And, but even with the four-way stop, we actually did, we did what's called a traffic analysis. And, you know, we can do that, those for unsignalized intersections. So part of our layout included looking at operationally what, what would happen with a four-way stop. And, and the numbers show us that, you know, there's hardly any queuing at all because now you're balancing the stops on, on all of the approaches. So previously, what was, what happens and is, you know, the Route 108 traffic is free flow. So the people coming up to Amesbury Road have a harder time, you know, getting out because traffic's just flying by, you know, on Route 108. So now that everybody stops, it should be more balanced and the numbers we're seeing are, and, and, you know, frankly, the numbers we're seeing, you know, existing are not horrendous, but, you know, I, 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 I can understand what you're talking about. And again, from what we've seen, you know, there should be an improvement with the queuing, which in turn, I believe, you know, would address the issue of people cutting down Gould, Gould Hill Road. Because if the intersection operates efficiently and they can get around it, I would think that they, they would, they would do that rather than go up Gould Hill Road. So.
Yeah, I would absolutely concur with you on this is a problem for one hour a day. The, the morning traffic is a non-issue because the morning traffic is mostly southbound. So whether they choose to go 108 south or they choose to go Amesbury Road south, that's not really the concern because they're heading south. It's, it's that, that one hour in the afternoon, you know, that's 3:30 to, to six o'clock, you know, four o'clock to six o'clock afternoon time where this is an issue because of the northbound people having the. Because of the northbound, uh, people having to pull out of Amesbury Road, like you said, into that. The, the non-stop of the 108 traffic, which although it's lighter heading southbound, they, most people don't know what to do with it. Because it's, they, they just, they'll stop and sit there for a good long time because they see a car, you know, a 300 yards down the road. But, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Stephen. All right. Um, so Kate Michaels asks, can you address the issue asked earlier regarding safety and ability for trucks slash plows, et cetera? To use a roundabout? Does the roundabout plan prohibit any kind of vehicles in any way? I think that one's for you, Dan.
So we, we've been, we've been, we've been, uh, Hans alluded to this earlier. And, and as most of you know, we're, we're, roundabouts are showing up more and more. You know, they're, they're, they're being constructed and, um, even, you know, whether it's towns or state roads. And, and we are, we are maintaining them. I, I, I can't disagree that if you talk to the maintenance folks, that they're not going to be happy with them. And, and, you know, they're not going to be, it's not going to be their, their, their first preference is to try to plow a, a, a roundabout. But, um, it is being done and, 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 uh, I, I personally, you know, don't know. You know, too much more than that, other than the fact that, you know, we are maintaining them. And, um. It's, it seems to be happening regarding restrictions, and I'm not sure the other part of your question was any restrictions. Again, there is no restriction really because it is designed for, you know, a tractor trailer to get around. So, uh, and again, a tractor trailer can, can navigate around. What will happen is the back, the back trailer part of the, of the, of the unit will, will drive up on the yellow. On the brown, reddish brown crosshatched area. But again, that is a mountable, what's called truck apron. Uh, and, and, and so they can negotiate through, through, through this, this intersection. Just like any other vehicle, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan. Um, so Kate, hopefully that addresses your question, but feel free to follow it up, uh, in the Q and A if, if you had a little bit more you wanted to get a response about. These next two questions in the Q and A, I, I think can both be, uh, shot towards Dawn here. So first question is anonymous attendee, hello, I might have missed this. Do residents vote for the option they want? Or is this decided by the town officials slash the state?
Yeah, so we would look for the town officials, uh, to recommend an alternative they could support. We don't generally do a vote. Sometimes we'll do a non-binding vote or alternatives, but I don't know that that'll happen. So I guess the way to really sort of vote is to talk to your town officials and express your concerns for one or the other alternative.
Awesome. Thank you, Don. Uh, and then the next question from Andy Collier is how reliable is the estimate for construction during the year 2023 to 2024? Given that four lanes for Route 125 were scheduled for 2010, for instance.
Yeah, so as I said a little earlier, um. Based on what we have been getting for funds and we anticipate getting for federal funds. That construction season should be viable. Uh, it'll also depend how the project. Can continue to develop if we run into some sort of issue along the way with something we're not aware of. Contamination or non-support from the town or something like that, but slows things down. But currently, um, that construction season is pretty reliable.
Awesome. Thank you, Don. Uh, one more rolled in that's kind of related. Uh, when would the final decision be made for the design?
Yeah, so we would like to get it, you know, in the next month or two. I don't know, I haven't looked at the. Selectment schedule to see how often they meet, but, um. The sooner we get it to, so we can keep going and meet that construction schedule, obviously. But it's not urgent that we get it next week necessarily. And. If, if the town felt they didn't have enough, um, information or. They wanted to get more input at a selectmen's meeting, we could certainly participate in one of those in the future.
Awesome. Thank you, Don. Um, I'm now going to invite Michael Andrews to speak. He's been sitting with his hand raised for a little bit. So, uh, whenever you're ready, you are unmuted on our end.
Hi, thank you very much for taking my question. Uh, what it is, is do you have any studies or is there any data? That would show the difference in local air pollution or particular emissions? Between these two different scenarios, knowing that on the stops, vehicles have to come to a complete stop. And then start rolling again and with the roundabout, they, for the most part, continue to move along. Thank you.
So I think that's a great question. Uh, I might look to Rebecca Martin. I, I, I don't know if you're aware of any study that, that kind of compares the air pollutants produced from a always stop condition when compared to a roundabout.
Hi, Hans. This is Rebecca. I am not aware of a specific study, but the, um, the, the person with the question was correct. That when the vehicles have to stop, that, um, there is more air pollution because of the idling time than with a roundabout. Um, and so what we will typically do as part of our environmental review is once it's, um, available. The level of service, um, for each of the movement. So, um, the amount of time people spend idling will be reviewed by our air quality program manager. And, um, he'll compare that to other, um, projects in the area. To see if it would have a significant impact on, um, air quality. And, um, so that, that's part of the environmental review is to look, look at how the selected, the preferred alternative would impact. Air quality.
Awesome. Thank you, Rebecca. Michael, does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, it does. Thank you very much. And, uh, if you're looking into it further, mostly the local impact, particularly right around the, uh, the immediate vicinity. And the, the local neighbors. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Michael. All right. We have a few more questions in the Q and A, uh, but that might be about it. Of course, you're welcome to keep asking. We have anonymous attendee, does the intersection meet an always stop control warrant? And Dan, I'm going to refer that one to you.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what that question is. Does it meet an always stop warrant? Is that referring to other alternatives like a two-way stop or what, what? I, I guess, I'm not sure the nature, the nature of the question. But, um, you know, one of the things here, if, you know, that that may be the question is, is, you know, are we looking at? You know, what makes it a, what makes it that one of the alternatives is a four-way stop compared to say a two-way stop? So a two-way stop, uh, a two-way stop here. I mean, essentially you already have a two-way stop, but it's, it's not, you know, it, it, because of the traffic here. And, and the fact that Route 108 is, uh, not directly opposing. Through the intersection, it makes it very difficult to, you know, if, if the question would be, well, if we put a two-way stop on, on, say. You know, you would have to have a stop sign on, say, Route 108 coming from the north. Uh, up here and then a stop sign here. Uh, and, and that would be a little awkward because Route 108 really does, you know, is not, you know, one of the Route 108 legs would, would stop. And one would not stop. Uh, and then you really can't stop both 108 legs. Because again, they're not, they're not opposed, uh, they're not opposing one another. So you would have, you know, turning vehicle conflict. So, um, that's what steers, steer, you know, that's why, you know, a four-way stop is really the, the other, you know. Other than a roundabout is really the other logical, uh, alternative for this intersection. Again, I'm not sure, you know, if that was really the nature of the question, but, uh, that's all I can think of.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Um, and to that anonymous attendee, if, if you want to rephrase the question, if you don't feel like that was the answer you were looking for. Feel free to go ahead and, and ask it in another, uh, shape or form. We've got a question now from Andy saying Newton recently zoned 108 in general as a village. In order to promote small business and generate tax revenue. Has there been any consideration given to the pass through nature of a rotary? Um, or the slowdown and stop nature of a four-way intersection in regards to a village district slash downtown? Um, and I might refer that one to Don.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a little bit of a tough question. Some, some towns have used roundabouts. To create more of a village feel. One that comes to mind is, hello, we actually put two roundabouts, uh, close to each other. Near their, I guess you'd call it park or downtown area. So even though. Traffic through the roundabout doesn't actually come to a stop, it does obviously create an area that slows people down. Fullway, if it stopped, traffic on each leg. I don't know if that would create more of a village feel or not. I guess that's where we would look for the, to the town for support for one of the alternatives.
All right. Thank you, Don. Moving on to maybe our last question of the night. Steve Sorachi asks, does that include the Amesbury ladder truck, which is a critical safety? In Newton and some additional towns in the area that access 108 via this intersection. So I, I, if I'm interpreting that correctly, when we were talking about vehicles being able to pass through the roundabout. He's now asking about, uh, fire trucks and their ability to pass through a roundabout. Um, so I'm going to give that one to Dan.
So we would need to have the, uh, we would need to know what, what, what type of vehicle it is. So I don't know if we had, I guess that's something that if, and I'm not sure if, if the town, I mean, we would have to know. Again, because different, uh, fire apparatus have, have different, uh, characteristics. And, and we do have the capability to analyze different design vehicles. And, and even for, for, for fire trucks, there, there's probably, you know, there's probably a dozen different vehicles that, that we could analyze. So, um, right off the bat, I would have to think that, you know, intuitively, I would have to think that if, you know, if a tractor trailer can, can, can get through. A ladder truck can get through, but I'm not certain of that. So we would have to get, if we can get more information from the town. On, 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 you know, what type of, of, uh, you mentioned ladder truck. So, uh, you, you know, again, there, you know, that's kind of a broad term. So, uh, we would be glad to, to look at it if we knew more of, of the characteristics. So, so maybe that's something that, that we can, we can reach out to, to, to the town. Or if somebody, you know, that's on, that's on the, the Zoom conference today could get us that information, uh, that would be great.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan. Um, Michael Andrews asks, which proposal would be the quietest for the local residents? So I think this one would be best answered either by, uh, Don or Rebecca. I, I guess I'm thinking of Rebecca Martin because of, uh, the noise pollution mentioned earlier.
This is Rebecca Martin. Um, so for a project like this, we wouldn't typically have a noise study included in the project. That's usually only when we're adding lanes and more of like a highway situation. So I, I don't, I don't have an answer to that question, but I could, um, I could ask. If you wouldn't mind emailing Don Leifert, the project manager, like you said earlier, I could find out from our noise. Specialist if generally the, which one would be quieter. Sorry, sorry that I don't know the answer to that offhand.
Awesome. Thank you, Rebecca. Um, so at this rate, there's no other hands raised, no more questions in the queue. But stemming pretty nicely from what Rebecca just mentioned about reaching out to us. Dan, I'd ask, could you toss us back over to the PowerPoint for the resources slide? I should also mention, um, I, on the side during this whole question and answer session, I was answering a couple of questions. In a typed fashion, so, uh, people feel free to view the Q and A and, and see if any questions were answered that way. Uh, as opposed to out loud. Um, so on screen now, uh, we have provided some reference information. It was mentioned earlier that this, uh, presentation in its entirety is posted to the project website for your review. So if you go there, uh, we have some links provided on this slide, uh, regarding roundabouts. Becoming a cultural, uh, sorry, a consulting party for cultural resources review. Uh, and then we also provided the link to the project website, but at that rate, if you've grabbed the presentation, you're probably already there. So if you'll step one slide further for me, Dan. We've mentioned as well that, uh, you can continue to direct questions through email to the project manager, Don Leifert. Uh, his contact information's on screen. Uh, it's also posted on the project website and again, embedded in the PowerPoint presentation that we have linked on the website. So with that said, uh, thank you all for participating in tonight's meeting. Before you disconnect, if you wouldn't mind, we've got one more poll just to get a sense of how we did as an agency running this public meeting through a virtual medium. So I'm going to run that poll, uh, now. And again, anonymous, uh, submission, so. You can answer however, however you please. I know we lost a couple viewers along the way, uh, just as the meeting dragged on, but it looks like a, a good number of you stuck with it. So again, we really appreciate your attendance and your weighing in with all your questions. All right, I'm just going to allow a few more seconds. But once you voted, feel free to, uh, unless I'm overlooking something, Dan or Don, I think you'd be free to disconnect. This last poll was more for our internal review, so we won't be sharing the results. So thank you again for attending, uh, and I, I hope you all have a good evening.